Thank you, and we'll start off with a roll call.
Counselor Windorf.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
West.
Here.
Zadi.
Here.
Salada.
Here.
Savage. Dimas.
Here.
Tate.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Counselors, um, first order of business, I entertain a motion to approve the revised pending board.
So move, your honor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Call all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Um, just a bit of a reminder, if you come to speak or you speak, um, speaking to the mic, try to be close to the mic, make sure the microphone's on, so we can have it recorded as part of the record, and those people watching, they can hear what you're saying. If you speak not by a mic, there's just dead silence. Um, so, we appreciate that. So, first order of business, um, uh, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting of January seventh, two thousand twenty.
So move, your honor.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Called all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go on to the appointments. Mr. President, Mr. New President, members of the council, I submit the name of Melinda Gillie to serve first term on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
So move, Mr. President.
Second.
Counselor Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Salada.
Yes.
Dimas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor, your honor, what I'm doing, I'm like, what, what are you looking at me for? Your honor, you have your.
Thank you, Mr. President.
My first.
Uh, Mr. President, members of the council, I submit to you the name of Bill Legursky to serve fourth term on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
Counsel, you have before you the name of Bill Legursky to serve his fourth. Board, right, board. So move. Second. Roll call please. Counselor West.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Salada.
Yes.
Dimas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Sir.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Item number three, Mr. President, members of the council, I submit the name of Joe Lysin to serve fourth term, Parks and Recreation Advisory.
Counsel, you have before you the name of Joe Lysin to serve his fourth term, Parks
So move, Mr. President.
Second. Counselor Zadi.
Yes.
Salada.
Yes.
Dimas.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
I hear you.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, as you could see, with two individuals serving fourth term on boards, um, it's, it's, it's a struggle to find individuals to serve on boards, committees, and, um, have an interest, um, in this city, um, get on our website, look at the boards, the pay is phenomenal.
That's the light.
That don't make sense. Yeah, but we appreciate all, all those who, um, serve and help this city function, put their time in on the boards. With that, our next, um, item on our agenda is the presentations and proclamations. We have two, um, proclamations. The first one, National Slavery Trafficking Awareness Month. We can, we can wait, we can go on to the next. You're still the li- are you lying? David? What? Well, no one complained that they can't hear.
Everyone's finally talking into the mic, so we know there's a problem.
Yeah. Okay, let's, um, let's do the cervical cancer awareness month proclamation. Kelly, come up with some information about cervical cancer. Kelly Segura with Wyoming Cancer Research.
Sit down. Thanks. So I'm a cervical cancer survivor. Um, I was diagnosed in two thousand seventeen, um, and I was, had cervical cancer from HPV, so bringing awareness to the HPV vaccination, vaccine, and cervical cancer this month is a huge passion of mine, and I also promote, um, the breast and cervical program through the state of Wyoming, and so promoting, um, that I can get those screenings for free is another big passion of mine. So if anybody here knows me, I'm kind of all over the place, and I, I really am talk about cancer and cancer prevention and awareness a lot. So ninety percent of cervical cancer is HPV related, and the HP vac- vaccine can prevent that. Um, the amount of neck and throat cancer in men is going to surpass that soon, and so the vaccine is actually for males and females. Um, so I think the more awareness we bring to cervical cancer, and the more awareness we bring to the HPV vaccine, um, we can eliminate cervical cancer. Australia by two thousand sixty-three, because they're passionate about the HPV vaccine, they will have, um, cervical cancer will pretty much be eliminated in Australia. So we need, as a community, need to understand the importance of, um, the HPV vaccine and the importance of cervical cancer survivors. So, thank you for giving me the time this evening, and like I said, I'm very passionate about spreading education and, um, cancer awareness through our community. So thanks for putting me on the schedule.
Well, thank you for, uh, coming down tonight, shedding light on this and the importance of it. And we have two proclamations, proclamation three. Whereas cervical cancer is a disease that strikes twelve thousand American women each year, and cervical cancer most often affects women in the prime of life, and regular cervical cancer, screening tests are effective to detect the disease early when it can be affected and treated. And HPV is a very common virus passed from one person to another during sex. Most people get it, but it goes away on its own. If HPV doesn't go away, it can cause cancer. And HPV vaccines are valuable that, together with screening tests, provide a formidable and effective means of preventing the disease. An increasing awareness among patients and healthcare providers alike regarding the best use of these prevention tools, the key component in safeguarding women's health. Now therefore be it resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, hereby declare, January two thousand twenty twenty, cervical cancer awareness month in Rock Springs, Wyoming, and I encourage all our citizens to recognize that cervical cancer is preventable, and to encourage the support, and support the women in our lives, and taking charge of our health, and availing themselves of the tests and vaccines that have proven to be so effective in preventing cervical cancer. We have the means to prevent this disease. It is incumbent on all of us to ensure that we have the will.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Concerning the HPV vaccine, is there a age range which is protective?
Yes, so eleven to twelve is the ideal age to vaccinate males and females. Um, it was recommended to the age of twenty-six, but they just changed it to the age of forty-five. The virus itself stays actively live in the body for ten to thirty years. So that's why we're seeing now more thirty and forty-year-old men and women diagnosed with neck, throat, and cervical cancer than we have in the past. So they're doing a lot of research at Huntsman's on the HPV virus, um, and we're gonna, it's gonna continue to progress, and more cancers will probably come, become from HPV vaccines, I mean, virus. So it's, it's very interesting, and they continually doing research, so it's always continually changing. So I have initiated programs within the schools to have the HPV vaccine given at the schools along with the T-DAP, um, menitis vaccine. Um, so I'm trying to work with the state levels to get that, those clinics executed throughout my region, which is Sweetwater, Sublet, Tita, Lincoln, and Uanta. So I'm kind of working from the top down, seeing if we can get initiated from a state level to have that vaccine throughout the schools, so the parents don't have to make another appointment to get them vaccinated. And then I'm partnering with the college here and doing a kind of a pop-ups throughout the college and with the nursing program to educate the older, um, adults, well, I shouldn't say older adults, but the twenty to twenty-somethings that may have not been educated and did not get the vaccine. So hopefully we'll be doing the vaccinations at the college here too as well.
We have another question. Don't go.
No, is that, is that vaccine voluntarily?
It's voluntarily given, so it's recommended, not required, to get, to be in school. Some states have made it a requirement, um, but our state is not there yet, and because of the position I hold, I can't do anything, um, because of the grant, so I can't do anything legislative or present that. But that would be an ideal situation, is to have it be required for schools, because the long-term, if we get our children vaccinated, if you look at the financial aspect of it, it's a long-term healthcare savings, you know. It, it's, to me, I don't understand why it's not requi- why it's not a requirement, but it is a recommendation. So if they get the recommendation from their primary care physician, then it will be done, but that's another educational platform. There are some physicians still that are not, do not carry the vaccine in the clinic, and so they're still not recommending that vaccine for males or females. And so that's another struggle that I deal with on a daily basis, is trying to get just physicians to recommend. So I wish, if you want to go forward and try to get that mandated, I would love you, but, um, yeah.
What, what was the reason you couldn't, because you were a grant holder?
Yeah, so I work for the state of Wyoming, so I can't do anything legislative, I can't do anything like that to present that. But if for any reason I never, I didn't get the grant job again, I definitely would go forward and push in the legislative to have that pass as a required vaccine. It just doesn't make sense to me why it's not, but.
Well, I know the message was well sent, twenty dollars for both, well, the law been made about.
There is controversy on it, but I think if you look back in history and look at T-DAP or flu, everybody's got their two cents of, of what a vaccine's going to do, and, you know, I, I can't fight if they don't choose to do it, they don't, they choose not to do it, but I think it's such a new vaccine that it's just, they need to be educated. And I, that's where I come in, and our primary physicians come in, is we have to capture those parents and those children while they're there, and so, and we need to execute the vaccine. So it's, it's a long journey, we got a long road ahead of us, but I mean, ninety percent of cervical cancer is HPV related. You want a cure for cancer, you know, so there's some things that, for me, it just makes me upset, because I don't want anybody to ever go what I went through, and if I could have got a vaccine, I, I would have got a vaccine. I mean, my lymph nodes came back positive, and I ended up with chemo and radiation, and I could have prevented that if I would have had a vaccine, but it wasn't there for me when I was younger. And so I just try to share my story and let people know that, you know, it's so important, so they have a bruise, or, or a lot of times the teenagers haven't eaten before they get the vaccine, and they, some do pass out. But I'll take the passing out over what I went through, and so it's just a lack of communic- it's a lack of education is what it is. And so I'm on a mission, and I will not stop until I see an increase in Sweetwater County on our, on our HPV vaccines, so. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Take a picture? Okay. Crystal, come on down and give us a little bit of, uh, update if you would, which on the spot. Uh, tell us about, um, National Slavery Trafficking Awareness. Crystal Martin, Water Against Trafficking.
Thank you, I apologize for being late. Um, so Sweet, Sweetwater Against Trafficking, Rising Hope is conducting an array of awareness and education events throughout the month of January. Um, the state has also proclaimed, um, Human Trafficking Awareness Month as well, um, because ninety-five, or we are number one out of all of the countries for human trafficking, sex-related. Um, and eighty-five percent of the human trafficking victims here in the United States are actually domestic-born. So we are trying to continue awareness and education as a preventative measure for our children. Um, the reason why we started this was because my daughter, um, two years ago, actually went through a grooming dynamic online through social media, and she was targeted within a week and a half by twenty-five to thirty different men. Um, and when I reached out to the different services in Wyoming, I realized that we didn't have human trafficking services as much as we needed it. And as I did my research, I found out that, um, there's an estimated of one in every five vehicles going down I-80 that's actually carrying a trafficking victim. So with Wyoming being the main interstate, or having I-80 along our state, we needed something. Um, throughout the past two years of giving presentations and working with some of our, um, victim services organizations, we're realizing that there are not enough services to provide for the human trafficking victims. Um, with my daughter, for instance, we had to send her to a behavioral unit instead of a trauma unit, to get her the help that she needed. And she will probably forever have to deal with the fact that she is more likely to become a victim of some sort of sexual violence, domestic violence, or possibly human trafficking, or she could even become a predator because of the predatory things that has happened to her. Um, recently I went to a conference down in Cincinnati, and I met with an investigator from Texas that goes all over US to do trainings for law enforcement, and I asked him to look up some of the statistics and different things on social media that, uh, would be about our area. And when he keyworded on different sites such as Craigslist, um, I know that some of them have been shut down for this, um, but different sites such as Craigslist, um, there were thirteen hundred and fourteen keywords for Rock Springs alone, and there were four hundred and nine in Green River, and then I think there was a little over a thousand in Evanston. So these are, whether it be labor trafficking or sex trafficking, these are key words that should be looked into on trafficking here within southwest Wyoming.
That is interesting. Like, you know, you think you live in a small community, shelter stuff, but obviously no one's. That's important. Counselor Zadi?
Question, can you keyword as much?
Right.
Ads, Rock Springs, Rock Spring.
Yeah, so ads that are key wording for human trafficking, whether it be labor or sex trafficking.
Any questions, counsel? Well, keep up your good work, that's.
Thank you.
Good to know, and, um, maybe a little bit redneck, but if that ever happens to daughters, sons of like, weapons involved. Case of prostitution. I mean, just, if that happened. Uh, that's, that's.
Right, and it, unfortunately, I, our first instinct is to, you know, pull out the guns and go blazing, right? Um, but what we're finding out is a lot of the predators that are involved with some sort of trafficking dynamic have had some form of trauma in their early childhood that has enhanced the possibilities of them with the predatory instincts. So, um, to keep them in your thoughts as well is something that I definitely think we need to bring a little bit more awareness to as well.
We have a proclamation. Proclamation reads, whereas men, women, and children in Wyoming are exploited for their bodies and their labor, and whether through violence, deceit, or the promises of a better life, some of the most vulnerable populations among us, including children in poverty, are preyed upon by human traffickers. And we must address the consequences of human trafficking, work to tackle its root causes, and we must always remember that our freedom is bound to the freedom of others. This month, let us find inspiration in America's progress towards justice, opportunity, and prosperity for all, and reaffirm our pledge to continue fighting for human rights, and we must shine a light on this violation of the basic human right to be free from violence and abuse, pledge to ensure every victim knows they are not alone, and foster supportive communities that help survivors seek justice. And in order to rid the world of modern slavery, we must do everything in our power to combat these violations of human decency. Now therefore be it resolved that I Timothy A. Como, Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, do hereby declare, January two thousand twenty to be National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Rock Springs, Wyoming, and I call upon businesses, community organizations, families, and all citizens to recognize the vital role we must play in ending all forms of slavery, slavery, and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. Thank you very much, Crystal, appreciate the time you take to come down.
Thank you.
Okay, counselors, this is gonna bring us to the petition section of our agenda, and I would ask if there are anyone here tonight wishing to address the council on issue, this would be your time. If you could speak, state your name for the record, make sure the microphone.
Good evening, Mayor Como, counselors. I'd like to speak to you tonight about the most common health problem experienced by our police officer, especially our patrol officers, and that is the hip and lower back pain they experience from the weight of the duty belt. Weight of their, their duty belts, which is depending on department policy, can weigh up to thirty pounds, putting a lot of pressure on the hips and lower back. This weight causes significant strain on the hips and lower back, causing chronic lower back pain, years down, you know, two, three years into the, their service. A proposal was made within a department to move to a load-bearing vest system. While this process was taking place, I started to study and educate myself on this subject. What I found was pretty profound. A study was done by the University of Wisconsin into this problem, and was very comprehensive, and their findings in a six-month study in two thousand eighteen of a load-bearing vest were significant in the reduction of hip and lower back pain that was caused by the duty belt, by moving the weight from the belt to the shoulders. Our police department approved a design that would meet their needs, found a vendor, and established a cost. The question then turned to funding. At this point, I spoke to Mayor Como, floated a proposal, how about the UMWA stand up and help? And after all I learned, I seen it was a, it was a health and welfare issue for our officer. I also see benefits not only for the officers, but for the department, city, and citizens, for less lost time, less overtime costs, and a potential for less workers complaint. The cost of the load-bearing vest is two eight, two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents each, and we currently need thirty-six of them, and bringing the cost to ten thousand three hundred and eighty-six dollars. I am proud to announce tonight that on January eighth at our meeting, I made a proposal to the members to help purchase eighteen of these vests at a cost of five thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars. If the department would purchase the other eighteen for five thousand one hundred and ninety-three dollars, fifty, fifty split, and we could do the order for the thirty-six vests could be placed within the next two weeks, I get it done. I'm proud that as a group, we came together for the health and welfare of our officers, for the city, and for our citizens. Thank you for your time, is there any questions?
Mr. Martin, first, I would like to just, um, once again, express, express my appreciation for the offer, that is, um, you know, there were some, uh, conversations about, um, you know, would we then be buying everybody necessary arm tools, tools of trade and like?
No, we will not.
And, and, and I think that message was well sent. I, I appreciate, um, Chief Checo and yourself working through this, I think, the win-win situation, and, um, the offer was something that from the very beginning I thought was, um, uh, just a fantastic offer, stand-up by the union and, um, in the, uh, uh, interest of the city employees and the health. I just appreciate, um, that means a lot. I don't know, counselors, if you have comments or concerns, but do appreciate that. Glad to see that came through and worked it out.
Appreciate you accepting, really do. Average weight is thirty pounds, that's across the nation. Now, we did weigh one officer's belt, twenty-nine pounds. Now, that wasn't a certified scale, by the way, it's a pretty cheesy scale.
When I'm funding, I'll carry like a forty-four.
Yeah. It's to you.
Up and down, and rolling down the mountain, say that, and I never thought.
You don't, I didn't. I was pretty naive about it going into it. I did a lot of studies, read a lot of studies.
Does the study, I was trained in originally, um, came to see me about this, having that on your shoulders, I'm sure helps take that weight off your hips, but it seems like at a higher up.
This study found no effect to that, they found dispersing the weight really helped that lower back. They found no unattended consequences, no safety issues to the officer, so it was pretty comprehensive.
Well, as I said, that's, that's just a win, city employees.
I believe so, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would ask, is there else here tonight wishing to address the union issue? Did I say you?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, just see the last.
Devin, how are you?
All right, mayor, counselors, I, uh, did a bad thing and forgot to email Kristen to get on tonight's agenda, so I'm going to do a public comment if that's all right with you, uh, mayor and counselors. I just wanted to do a quick, uh, thirty-second update on the recycling center, uh, from two thousand nineteen. Uh, we processed a little over one point five million pounds of waste in two thousand nineteen, which is a twenty percent increase over the two thousand eighteen numbers. which is a twenty percent increase over the two thousand eighteen numbers. Um, we did that with, uh, about equal funding, if you will. Um, and also under conditions where the markets have completely tanked. In the month of December, it cost us fifteen dollars a ton to send out cardboard. That's why there is cardboard piled up everywhere around the recycling center in bales is because we're waiting for the markets to turn around. We got lucky and in January, they turned around to a positive five dollars per ton. So, that's, uh, still a reduction of a hundred and sixty-five dollars per ton from what we were getting about a year and a half, two years ago. So, just wanted to give you a brief update on that. I won't steal anymore of your time. I know you've got a long agenda, so.
Well, that's, uh, that's good to know. I was wondering if that was going on with bales and trying to market. Hopefully we'll, uh, continue to grow that, that program, see some change on solid waste, old side. Be able to offer that, that service to community, including curbside. That's just away from when money is old, going all, it's much needed. Um, and we're watching the stories in Green River about recycling. Glamorous, um, and don't want to see that type of situation where individuals are spending all their time up the container, separate container trucks, throwing up, throwing in one big, sending to landfill. And I don't think they're anywhere closer from what I purchased today. I'm trying to get, uh, approval from the state to allow them to operate. So, I think recycling is, uh, not the cash cow. We all know that. Um, but it's something that morally, I think we, we owe to the community, we owe to, uh, the world. Everybody needs recycling, that, um, those items out of the landfill, uh, save that space and those items. And, uh, even breaking is, is the win.
Absolutely. And Mayor, if I might, there's a couple of people I'd like to publicly thank at a public meeting, if I can, for some donations that have been made. Uh, D-Burnardi Construction poured a concrete pad for us outside of our new garage door. That garage door was partially funded by R S N B Bank. We recently lost heat in the building and Vaughn's Heating and Plumbing came in and fixed that at no cost to us. So, there's been a lot of generous donations from local businesses trying to keep the center up and running. And, uh, it's, it's just been great. And if we can make it through this next budget session with funding and the changes you talked about with the Solid Waste District Board, I think there's a very bright future for a regional effort for recycling, uh, that we could start seeing come about in two thousand twenty, so.
Yeah, let's keep on it. It's, uh, it's a positive outlook. Sure that everybody does their part.
Thank you.
Devin, any questions, council? Thank you. Any others, uh, wishing to address the council? Hearing none, I'm going to close the petitions and move on to the officer staff reports. Counsel, we have item number one, the Health Insurance Fund recap for December two thousand nineteen. Two, the financial report summary, December two thousand nineteen. Three, the R S F, R S R F Financial Statements, November two thousand nineteen. And four, the Animal Control Monthly Report, December two thousand nineteen. I would entertain a motion to approve the officer's staff reports placed on file.
Some of you.
We do have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna bring us down to the council committee, council committee and board reports. We have item number one, the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board, meeting minutes of November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen. And two, the Main Street meeting minutes of December ninth, two thousand nineteen. Are there any other council committee or board reports?
Your Honor.
Our councilman West.
I wasn't going to, but I can't handle myself. Um, I watched the Board of County Commissioners meeting today. I didn't have a chance to make it over there. But on their agenda was discussion for the specific purpose tax. Goal was to come up with a cap amount, tell us some type of reasoning behind distributions to the individual municipalities. They did a split vote, but it came down to an eighty million dollar cap. I'm sure a lot of you read Sweetwater Now article. But there was no decision as far as how they tend to distribute those amounts, which continues to be a little bit frustrating. They did have PowerPoint presentation with just some ideas that I believe came from Mr. Lloyd. And of that, the example that was used was in fact that eighty million. And they were trying to base it off of population because of the smaller communities. Being such a smaller population, not being able to generate as much sales tax revenue, multiple of five for them. Doing that, they were taking that essentially out of the bigger communities percentage. So, for us, if we represent fifty-three percent, maybe Superior makes up one point two percent. They're giving them additional five percent and taking that out of our fifty-three. So, the proposal that they had up there basically took us down to thirty-five percent. Green River and the county reached twenty-five percent, the others were, you know, various multiples. So, they did not vote on that. Um, there was some discussion that kind of went round and round, but fortunately, still no direction there. Comment was made that, uh, each of the municipalities need to go back and prioritize their projects again. I don't see the purpose of personally until we know how much money we're getting. Which they use that formula, exactly, get about fourteen million based off of thirty-five percent of eighty million. There's also a comment that they're going to fight Vaughn Council, which I believe is stifled financial, next meeting. Again, I'm not sure why. I feel like that's putting the cart before the horse. My perspective is that until each municipality knows how much money they're getting, decide what their priorities are and they're gonna bond within those priorities. But, um, it's a brief update, but need to wait an hour, February.
Well, I appreciate the update, um, Council West. Um, hopefully we won't continue to have these. No direction. We're losing time. We did send, uh, a letter a while back that, um, uh, stated our concerns with that. Still a lot of work to be done at this point. At an eighty million dollar cap in the City of Rock Springs, about thirty-five percent cut port.
Yeah.
Thinking that, uh, to, to, with relying on what I believe is fair.
I mean, the, the letter we sent was over a month, met twice. The whole purpose of that was to kind of get this ball rolling. Yet another month has passed and comments are being made that they're taking their time and trying to do their due diligence. But decisiveness is starting to play a factor and read any of the comments are starting to publicly face. Falls in their court, starting to get more and more negative, which is pretty frustrating for us as a community body, I think.
I did notice, uh, a survey about individuals who willing projects, whether the community felt that six tax was a, was a viable source of revenue, build infrastructure in the community, seemed to be self-supported. Uh, even up to the point where the, the question was up to six years. I think even then, it was still leaning towards the support this source of revenue. And I think all in all, with many times has been before the, the public with infrastructure aids and revenue down. Don't see, yeah, majority that are opposition, but source of revenue is not only helped, funded by those visiting our community, but a great way to build those infrastructure army, couldn't say. So, we'll see what comes. I appreciate the report. Um, we'll stay focused on our game plan. I don't know how we could go back to the table and prioritize. List exists. As I stated before, I'm not very much interested in cutting from that, that, our initial cut. We'll, we'll see what, um, direction county commission.
On another note, they, uh, they did list up there projects with this percentage that I'm talking about, which for us, of that twenty-eight million, what priorities that would fund. But then when you got down to the counties, it said, no projects prioritized. I thought was kind of ironic. Wanted to share that. I'll stop.
I'm afraid to ask, but is there other council board reports that come for us? I would just like to give a shout out to the city council, um, Chad Banks, all right? The city as a whole. Um, we, we did go before the SLIB board, which is just a, it's kind of a different process. Go before the business council, who did a fantastic job, um, research, visited our community, found the first security bank. Did the review. Asked several questions that we worked with them to get through. Um, came forward with a great recommendation and then you go for, so we get the okay from the business count. Um, to receive funding, go before the SLIB or to actually receive the these five elected officials. I'm just gonna go ahead and say it wasn't a pretty um, a bit tense. Uh, it was back and forth, Peter totter. Uh, but I think all in all, the elected officials clearly understood it was a great project. It was just how the City of Rock Springs intended to, um, pay back the, um, the grant. But it's a phase one project, um, business readiness. Of course, we're not at the phase two, which we submitted, but we have some great ideas on what the business plan was. But our goal is to, uh, fix this building. Yeah, structural issues we have, make it ADA compliant, windows, doors, fire, fire suppression system, uh, utilities, including fiber, uh, and the outside cleanup, then present it, market it. So, there was a lot of debate on what, what our, what our goals were. I commend, um, Chad Banks, uh, Senator Anselmie Dalton attended with us, uh, our legislators and everybody that wrote letters in support of the project. Um, believe that, um, we answered the questions, um, well. Um, we finally got a unanimous approval after some time. We're on our way, but it's been a long, long time coming. I'm just excited. So, thank you for everybody, um, even out in the community that, um, took the time to write a letter. Um, uh, talk, speak with their legislators, uh, this council for the match. Um, uh, we have, uh, we have a long haul to go, but we have to start sometime. We are going to start hopefully this summer. We'll see. But, um, all in all, um, we've crossed our last hurdle, so just wanted to, yeah. And, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports, including those, um, added, place them on. We do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Records show no opposed. And we're gonna move on to the correspondence section of our lender, of our agenda. Item number one, a letter from Sweetwater County Democratic Party regarding a women's march held downtown on January eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Item number two, the postcard from Red Desert Domain Society regarding their two thousand twenty annual meeting taking place on January thirtieth, two thousand twenty, from six thirty to eight thirty P M at Side Six Book and Wine Bar. And item number three, a postcard from Sweetwater County Child Development Center regarding their third annual art gala benefit dinner and auction on March seventh, two thousand twenty, at five P M at the Holiday Inn Bar. Counselors, I entertain a motion to approve the correspondence and place a file.
Go move, Your Honor.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Just gonna move us on to the bills and claims. Item number one, under bills and claims, the bill is bills and claims for January twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
Your Honor.
Councilman Windorf.
I move to approve the bills and claims for January twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
We have a motion to approve the bills and claims for January twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this is gonna bring us onto item number two, the salaries for January seventh, two thousand twenty.
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for January seventh, two thousand twenty.
We have a motion to approve the salaries for January seventh, two thousand twenty. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? This is gonna bring us on to the new business section of our agenda. Item number one, request from the Department of Engineering and Operations and Public Services for permission to apply for a P D M F M A grant through the Wyoming Office of Homeland Security for flood mitigation measures on Kilpecker Creek train. Counselor, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
Do we have a motion to approve this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Records show no opposed. Item number two, the request from the Department of Engineering and Operations, Public Services for permission to extend the two thousand nineteen uniforms contract to the current contract holder, Al Skol, under current unit bid prices for period of one year. Counselors, what's your pleasure? We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, the request from the Police Department for permission to fill a vacant part-time animal control administrative assistant position. Counsel, pleasure? Councilman Dotty. Do we have a motion to approve the request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number four, the request from the Police Department for permission to fill a vacant animal control officer one position. Counselor, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Windorf.
I move to approve this request.
Motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bring us to item number five, the request from the Rock Springs Housing Authority for permission to seek bids for roof replacement for the Century Site. Counsel, pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate. Have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, the request from Lou's Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Jenner President Award Domini Dinner on February sixth, two thousand twenty, four P M to midnight at the Bunny Hall. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve this request.
We have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number seven, we have the request from Lou's Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Jenner Consecutive Safe Years Banquet on February twentieth, two thousand twenty, from four P M to midnight at the Bunny Hall. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Windorf.
I move to approve this request.
Do we have a motion to honor this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number eight, the request from the Ponderosa Bar Incorporated for a liquor catering permit for the Red Tie Gala on February first, two thousand twenty, from three P M to midnight at the Sweetwater Events Complex, approved by the Green River City Council. What's your pleasure?
That request?
Do we have a motion to honor this request? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number nine, the request from the W M C dash P D E L L C doing business as Pine Bluffs Distilling. And item number nine, the request from the W M C dash P D E L L C doing business as Pine Bluffs Distilling for a liquor catering permit for the second Saturday's event on February eighth, two thousand twenty, from eleven A M. to three P M. at Escape Day Spa. Pleasure.
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate. We do have a motion to approve the request. Second.
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this can bring us on to the resolution. And then item number one, under resolutions, is Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero seven.
A resolution accepting and approving bylaws for the city of Rock Springs Beautification Tree Board, authorizing Timothy A. Como, mayor of the city of Rock Springs. Matthew L. Burnett, a city clerk, to accept said bylaws of the city.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West.
Move to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero seven.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero seven? Do we have a second? Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Shalata. Yes. Demus.
Yes.
Tate. Lindor.
Yes.
Halter. West.
Yes.
Dottie.
Yes.
Merrick.
Yes. Been a lot of work going into the, uh, beautification and tree board. I'm thinking good things are going to happen this year.
We just need some money.
Just need some money. Item number two, Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero eight.
A resolu- a resolution accepting and approving an agreement for professional services between National Children's Advocacy Center, city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. Burnett, a city clerk, to execute said agreement on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Councilors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Shalata.
To approve Reso- Zero eight.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty zero eight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Lindor.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Dottie. Shalata.
Yes.
Merrick.
Yes. Item number three, Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero nine.
A resolution accepting the Article six. Sorry. Not getting it.
Kind of red there, aren't you?
Good thing it wasn't the Super Bowl.
We should make, we should make, we should make the budget all in Roman numeral. I'm sorry.
Of the collection labor agreement between the International Union, United Mine Workers of America Local forty-eight ninety-three and the city of Rock Springs, um, directing that amendment on behalf of said city.
Do you ever get to that Roman numeral and you just don't know what it is and you don't want to say it?
Like the Super Bowl. I still don't know. X and L. Your Honor, that was my.
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Shalata.
Move to approve Resolution twenty zero nine.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash zero nine? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Councilor Tate.
Yes.
Lindor.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Dottie.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Merrick.
Yes. Trying to remember high school and you had to study all that, all those X's and Bs and Ones and.
I tried to forget that.
Item number four, Resolution two thousand twenty dash one zero.
A resolution of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to support moving the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition, S E C office from Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce, Commerce, the Sweetwater
Councilors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash ten.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash one zero. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Councilor Lindor.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Dottie.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Yes. Just going to bring us to our ordinances, which we have two, both on second reading, ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero one, second reading.
Or in submitting the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs for one tract of land from community business. Below density residential R one, one tract totaling eight-three-two acres, located as hereby described in Section twenty-seven, Survey Township, nineteen, North Ring, one oh five, west of Sixth Principal Ridge and the city of Roxbury, county of Sweetwater, state of.
Item number two, ordinance two thousand twenty dash zero two, second reading.
In ordinance admitting the official zoning map of the city of Rock Springs for one tract of land for low-density residential R one, low-density residential R two, totaling six thousand ninety-eight square feet, located as hereby described in Section fifty, Township nineteen, one oh five, west of Sixth Principal Ridge and the city of Roxbury, county of Sweetwater, state of.
Councilors, with that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn into an executive session to discuss real estate litigation.
So moved.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will adjourn to an executive session.